Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's seven o'clock and we'll begin our Wabashua City Council meeting of December 5th on this first snowy evening of 2017. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome. We have a guest speaker this evening. The answer is no. Public comments. Does anyone in the audience like to address council and share a thought? Seeing none, we'll move on to changes or additions in the agenda. Council members, any changes or additions? Sue, on your part?
Add two bills, two warrants. One is for Public Works that didn't get in on time and it's just for oil, for the 2001 Sterling plow truck. And are we adding this to the bills?
Yeah, we're gonna add, sorry. We're gonna add a possible, we put our roller out on bid to sell and we sold it and there might be some issues with the engine where we might just refund that money. So, we want to have that out there as approved so we don't have to wait a month to pay this guy back for what he paid for it, so.
Okay, so there's a oil bill, did you say?
Yes.
And a possible repair bill.
Refund.
Refund.
Okay, refund.
Is that gonna be like number four to general business?
Yes.
Okay, then a motion to accept the agenda tonight with the two changes?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass unanimously. Mayor's presentation. It's the holiday season again in Wabashua and I would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a merry autumn, merry holiday season. I'd like to recognize and thank all of the citizens who are sharing their holiday decorations, both on their homes and out in their yards. It helps make the beauty and the spirit of this time of year in the Wabashua community greater. On Friday night, just four short days from now, the Canadian Pacific Holiday Train will make its stop in Wabashua. The train and entertainment will once again be on the west side at Gambia and the Canadian Pacific rail tracks. We're all very fortunate to have this train stop. Each year CP, Canadian Pacific makes a monetary donation to the Wabashua Food Show. In the years past, it's been anywhere from four to six thousand dollars and that is very, very helpful. I'm asking that all who can bring and donate non-perishable foods to the holiday train Friday night. There will be places to drop off your offerings and this year Pastor Dave Knox in the Faith Lutheran Church will be providing sweets and hot beverages and I hope to see you all there. To council members, the League of Minnesota Cities will be conducting training sessions for new and experienced council members at the end of January. Take a look at the League of Minnesota Cities website and I encourage all to attend. In this week's Herald, Wabashua Herald, there's a notice for a few openings for commission members for the Wabashua. The Historic Preservation Commission, the Planning Commission, and I believe Streets are among the openings. So if you would like to help our city by sharing your talents and your ideas, I would encourage you to contact City Hall and protect, not only protect, but express your interest. Any questions, comments? All right. We will have committee reports. Who'd like to start tonight? Craig, I saw your hand go up.
Okay. The Planning Commission, we recommended at our meeting last month to do the Phase One of the zoning ordinance rewrite. So we're dividing that into three phases and they're doing Phase One and that's coming tonight for your tentative approval. And then we're gonna do Phase Two to follow up in January and February. Really, Phase One actually started more or less in the middle of the zoning ordinance and it got at the heart of the ordinance, which is described some of the activities in the zoning districts and they wanted to get that enacted now so they got a chance to see how it works, to see if it needs to be stroked in the future. We also talked about at our last meeting about recommending a public hearing, which we did and we're gonna hold it on December 12th at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. And it's gonna be about a land use change for this area of land that the city has just purchased from the Jusons. And that's gonna change from, use is gonna change from a medium-density residential to an open space and that's to facilitate the making it into a park. And so the zoning and the land use are related, but they're different. So it's gonna stay zoned as an R2, but it's gonna be an open space. So that will be discussed at a public hearing next Tuesday at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Steve?
Of the utilities met today and outside of regular business, we decided to purchase new water meter reading equipment. The current equipment was designed to last for 10 years and it's now 13 years old and so it's time to upgrade. The new equipment will have, give us more ability as far as reading meters by the hour, by the gallon. The old equipment was not able to do that, so that was about it.
I guess there's been tons of technology changes in 13 years.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions of Steve?
How much more is that gonna cost? What kind of effect is that gonna be?
The total for the equipment was thirty-two hundred dollars.
Oh.
Anything else? Brian, do you have anything tonight?
No, no committees.
Jeff?
Nope.
John?
Port Authority. Tuesday, November 21st was the last time we met. On the agenda under general business, we had some discussion with respect to the bonding request for the city as well as the port terminal setup. With respect to the bond, Ralph was there and he sent, he handed out some letters of support that we've gotten from around the state with respect to this request and they go everywhere from Tim Palenti, the Executive Director for the Destination Medical Center, the Economic Development Agency for Rochester, all of them kind of identifying that this is a, what we're doing here for the city with our, the riverfront dairy development and with the expansion of the Eagle Center is, has a regional economic impact and it's a big deal and it draws people to southeast Minnesota. It gives people something to do when they're in Rochester, you know, and ultimately at the Destination Medical Center. Also from the University of Minnesota, the Chamber of Commerce, both here and in Rochester, Prairie Island Indian Community, it's a lot of, really Department of Interior for Fish and Game as well, a lot of folks and then several commanders for VFW and what else? I think that's about it. But it's a lot of support from both elective officials as well as community leaders and communities. So that was nice. One of the other items that got finished, Chad and Ralph and I think possibly even the Chamber of Commerce worked on this and this is kind of that one-page info sheet that we would hand out or deal with, deal out to interested folks either in the community or at city or at state level. And I'll pass them around so you guys can take a look at those. I don't know anybody who's jumping ahead or whatever. So that's kind of nice. Just quick nutshell, that's real good. Chad, it was, when was the day at the Capitol, do you remember?
March, is that the March date?
Was it the March 8th or something?
Yeah, early March.
Yeah, it's towards the end of the session.
Yeah. It's a Wednesday.
I can't remember right offhand.
Yeah, we were scheduled to be at the Capitol and we'll have an eagle up there talking about the whole bonding request and the impacts that it has. So that'll be pretty cool. March 7th.
March 7th.
The other item was with respect to the Corps of Engineers dredging plans or thoughts. Is there something that you wanted to, do you want to talk a little bit about that or?
I had planned to update.
Okay, so I'll just leave that for you to update. Okay. That was about it?
Questions for John? If you can, on March 7th, Ralph is trying to put together a trip for Wabashua citizens, Wabashua City Council, Port Authority members to attend the day at the Capitol. I believe they'll have an eagle there. Also, Ralph asked if we, someone in the community would like to sponsor the bus that day. So Chad's in charge of bus sponsorships, so just get in touch with Chad and we would appreciate anything, Tony, in getting our face in front of the legislators on March 7th. So Tony, streets, parks and rec.
Evening, everyone. Streets Commission did not, we did not have one for the agenda. And going on to parks, we are in the process of updating our park plan and that's last done was 2009. So we're gonna take it park by park and what we do is, for instance, we took Beach Park, we get all the, all the structures, make sure that they're all updated and on the maps and trees, sidewalks, benches, any type of equipment that's in the parks, what they need for maintenance in the next few years. And then also, we kind of dig back into the comprehensive plan and see what people would like to see in the parks in the future, so then we can add that. So it's kind of like the comprehensive plan, but it's broke down into each individual park. So we're gonna work on that. We just started with Beach Park. Christie from Bolton Make is gonna do the mapping for us, so give us a good picture of, you know, like instead of the whole city, you get just one park. So it's kind of nice for people to go on our website and see what's in the park, which park do they want to go to, you know, and so forth, so. Ash trees. Did send out an email to all of you and the Street Commission and the Park Board about what we would like to do with the trees and it seems like everybody's in agreement with what we're looking at doing. We will be treating a few trees that are in the city parks only, so we don't basically go in and clear out the whole park. So there is a mixture of trees in the parks, but like Malone Park is probably 70% ash trees, so obviously we don't want to go in there and wipe out every tree that's there. So we'll save a few nice trees that are in good shape. We'll replant another, several species of trees and be babysitting them all next year and that's part of the funding is new trees. We'll be getting a stump grinder so we can grind out all of our old stumps. And in the city boulevards, unless someone privately wants to treat trees in front of their property, they will be removed by us as soon as we can get to them, working through this winter and next summer, so. The holdup right now, we wanted to wait until the ground freezes so we don't tear up a bunch of park land with our equipment and the brush dump is still full. We're waiting for that company to come, hopefully in the next month or so, and get that ground up so we got some room to work with. Park Board, let's see, ash trees, park plan. One update that I would like to share, it kind of concerns the Street Commission, is we have been trying for probably a couple of years to do, have something done at the intersection down by Quick Trip. We've seen, I've dealt with a lot of other people, semis going through the four-way stop and it's mostly on Highway 60. County Road 30 doesn't seem to be too much of a problem, but, so we've been going back and forth and kind of with Brian Malm's help, using some big wordage, we actually got some approval from MnDOT to put up our own LED flashing stop signs. And so we're kind of just starting to plan it. Is it gonna be all four stop signs? Is it gonna be two? What type of signals are we gonna use? Is it gonna be one red light above the stop sign flashing or is it gonna be the whole stop sign? So MnDOT has their own stipulations on what we can and can't do, so we just gotta get everybody together, but at least we got the okay on it. So I think that's pretty big from what we were working on, so that is all I have in the same business.
Tony and Chief Joe, we're a few days away from maybe that first four-inch snowfall. Can you just tell us again so that our citizens aren't going out to the Justice Center with 150 bucks?
Sure. Okay, so, snowfall, if it reaches three inches or more, we are gonna plow the entire city and that means that you cannot park on the street, otherwise you will get a ticket for 150?
Hundred.
Hundred, okay. So then if it gets towed, that would be an additional 150. We've been having trouble with getting things towed last year, so basically we gotta come back and clean it up afterwards if it ain't froze down in a big chunk. So at least that money from the ticket helps cover us going back to clean up. There's some streets that people will be parked on both sides, so we can't even get through. That's a pain too, so if we can remind anybody, you know, if we're looking at two or three inches of snow or more, please don't park on the streets. Use the parking lots downtown or your other property off-street. We do go out and, you know, say if we get an inch and a half of snow, we do go out and hit our main streets because we have an obligation with Wabashua County that we get paid to clean Grant and Gambia and usually we keep the Justice Center clean there and a second street in downtown. So yes, we do go out when there's less than three inches, but a full operation of cleaning every street is normally three inches or more, so you can find that information. I change the answering machine at the Public Works Department every time we issue a snow emergency, so you can call in and listen to the machine and it'll tell you when it starts, when it ends. I do send out a code RED which calls just about every house in town and then you can sign up for text alerts, email alerts through that system too. That link can be found on our website, coderead.com and we do advertise at certain radio stations and that I don't have on the top of my head, but it's...
We need KTTC.
Yeah.
The website and Facebook.
That's pretty much, and Facebook too, yep. So we try to get as much out there as we can, but...
Tony, I think you do a good job, I mean, other than going door-to-door and saying it's time, I think you're doing a good job, Chief Joe, of communicating various ways with our citizens, so.
It's always the first one that's bad and I hate to see it happen, but you know, people don't, sometimes they don't have internet or...
Sort of like Storm in the Cities today, it was the first one.
Yeah.
Some people forgot how to drive in the...
We only had one truck out this morning and it was actually good because I got a couple new guys and so we had two guys, some people probably say, why is this two guys riding around in a plow truck? Well, one guy's learning, the other guy's driving and showing him, so if you hear any guff on that, that's what happened, but we got to train them in and it worked out good this morning, so.
Chief Joe, anything to add to that story? Okay. Tony, thank you very much. Chad?
Thank you, Mayor. Mostly I was gonna update on the Army Corps discussions. I know we had said originally that we expect a new plan in the middle of December. I don't see that coming out quite yet or even middle of December. We're probably looking more towards January and that is because the, what's being referred to now as the preferred alternative, which is running all of the sand through the, what was deemed the Carls East and West and it's up here on the, on the screen if you're curious, just past the hospital with the creation of a barge terminal that would unload the sand up into this area and then be trucked out of town in different ways, not through town. So those things are things we've, we've talked about. We had a meeting with the landowners and the Corps about two weeks ago up in St. Paul. That was a lengthy discussion to roll out the ideas that we all have and try to get everything on the table that we need to have discussed, any exceptions that the Corps needs to make and anything different as far as that goes. We did apply for the grant as John alluded to with the Port Authority and we did receive positive feedback on that today, this morning, I believe. Yeah, so we did receive some positive feedback on that grant. We should know in a couple of weeks on that and we'll work through that whole process. There's a, there's still a lot to do there and a lot of eye-dotting and t-crossing to work through, but it's getting progress and we're making progress and I can say I'm still 99% confident the other properties are off the table and we're moving forward with a new plan. So it's been money well-spent and it's gonna hopefully be a good outcome across the board knowing where we originally were. We can't forget about that, what the original plan was and what we were gonna have to be forced to deal with until we step forward, so. I do, I am going back up there on Thursday, probably for the majority of the afternoon just to continue the discussions with them. That's that.
Okay. Questions for Chad? So, activity is moving on dredge materials?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And you were gonna say?
Nothing. Sorry.
Where's the sand gonna be moved from?
From that spot?
Yes.
To either pits or other commercial use. There's several areas that have been identified that need filling, mine reclamation, and there's also, there's also the discussion on energy, if that sand can be used in the production of energy or oil drilling and things, so. The whole, the whole thought behind the terminal is that it, it's not rolling through heavy residential area. It actually will become a revenue source as a per-tonnage tax coming across the dock. Thank you.
So what it does is it's essentially, it controls or we're able to manage the one point of entry, if you will, of this product to come into our community. Then there's the options of how to get it out of here, which would be trucking in, you know, shifting sand from the old, from the old big pit to the other pit and actually piping it from there to there. So, but at least we then we have, it's not this, the possibility of it being brought in anywhere up and down the river, it's gonna, that's gonna be our point. City will control that port through the Port Authority.
And the land will remain in private ownership so that the zoning, CUP and other conditions can be put on that landowner as to how that stuff gets moved, where it gets moved to, the routes, all those things. Now if we were to lose that control and it would be eminent domained by the Corps, we would lose all control of everything. They could run trucks wherever they want to, whenever they want to and that whole thing. So that's another big piece and the landowners are certainly up to speed with that and totally understand it.
I think some of the discussion that I heard at the port meetings was that the barge terminal could be used for export of grain as well, other, and other commodities too. So I was thinking, there are some concerns if we do open it up to grain trucks that that, which is an agricultural traffic, is a little bit harder to control. So we want to make sure that we have the controls in place so that they're not running through town like, like you were talking about on the sand trucks.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chad. Item number eight is consent agenda, which tonight includes the approval of the November 7th Regular Council Maintenance, 2017 Annual Licenses, second reading of the amendments to the ATV and the golf cart ordinances, the first reading of the zoning ordinance edits and a resolution designating annual polling places and finally to approve the warrants. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I make that motion.
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pass. All those against, same sign, pass unanimously. There is no public hearing tonight. We are happy to have Senior Project Manager of MnDOT, Mr. Chad Hanson with us and Chad is going to talk with us about the R-cut layout in Chad Springer. We've got some nice tellies...
Yeah, we're all set.
...in our, in our council chambers tonight. Can you give us just a word how they got there and how we're gonna use them?
We're gonna watch them, Mayor.
Do you want to go to the power plant?
I will in just a second. So this all started, we've talked about better ways to be able to present information, so Greg wanted us to look at some things. We started talking and we found what's called Google Chrome, Chromecast. It's, so I'm basically displaying my desktop here as we sit today and there's two monitors, one facing the council and one facing the crowd. What we're able to do also, and they're all tied, those are both tied in together, so this'll aid us in any of the visuals, anything we need to show there. We did this whole setup for less than a thousand dollars.
Okay.
So it's been, Tony's crew hung the TVs, did a good job there. We got a little bit of electrical work, so we don't have a zip-tied extension cord hanging up against the wall like you see there, so, but that'll be coming, so. Chad, which one do you want me to go to here?
The bottom one's fine.
Oh, that's the power plant, there's only one, sorry.
You just want us to flip to the slides as they go?
You tell me.
Go for it. All right.
How do I get to the side view here?
It comes with little three dots.
Here?
Yep. It's a height presenter view.
Thank you, Tecky. Okay.
All right, thanks. So I'm Chad Hanson, I'm managing the Highway 61 Mill and Overlay project that's gonna be coming in 2019. So I kind of just wanted to, just more or less come, give an update where we're at with the project and all some of the, you can go ahead and go on there, Chad. Just kind of want to give a general overview of the project, what it is. It's, you know, it's more than just a mill and overlay, we're wrapping in some of the safety projects here in Wabashua as well, so I'll touch on some of that, kind of run through the schedule. So the, kind of the overall for the Mill and Overlay project, it starts at Highway 42 and it's in the four-lane section, it's the northbound lanes only and it continues on from there, that point all the way to the south side of Lake City. And it, there'll be an exception for the downtown area of Lake City that will not be done in 2019 and then it'll pick up again on the north side of Lake City and continue all the way up, all the way to about Hanson's Harbor on the north side of Lake City. So that whole thing is about 24-mile job, it's gonna be a mill and overlay off that whole duration, the whole section. There'll be a couple culverts that will be replaced, so we're gonna have to have a, have a short-term detour on 61. But that will be something that'll be coming, and there'll be more public public outreach about that too, in advance of that. All the guardrail is basically gonna be replaced, so we're gonna have about twelve miles of new guardrail along sixty-one. There's some new standards that we have to follow, and it's, none of it does meet the current standards, so that'll all be that'll all be replaced as well. Then the reason why we're not doing Lake City as a part of my project is we're gonna do that the following year. You guys are probably aware, but we're that's gonna be changing from a four lane down to a three lane section. Basically, if the entire section of sixty-one through Lake City, you'll be going down to a one lane in each direction with a center left turn lane in both directions. So that's something that we're working on, really as a separate project with the city, and they're leading that. The city voted that in here about a year ago, and so we're working closely with them on that. So and then the other safety improvement project here in Wabashaw, I can touch on that if you go ahead. So kinda what brought this about was the the study that was done about a year ago. I know it was kind of a broader area, not just along sixty-one. I think it looked at how sixty ran through the through the city of Wabashaw as well, but part that I wanted to focus on with my project is the improvements that are gonna be happening along sixty-one. And I know one of the biggest things was just the safety at the three intersections of sixty and at Shields Avenue and then Bruger Valley Road or County Road thirty. And, you know, all three of those intersections have above average crash rates. Two of them are they're above the critical crash rate, which is it it's just a higher level morally more statistically significant, but so sixty and Shields are have had a lot of crashes, I guess, including fatal and serious crashes involved as well. Looking at the crash reports, I know some of the biggest types of crashes that we're seeing is the right angle and the left turn crashes, which are typically the most severe types of crashes that we have. I think approximately two-thirds of the crashes are of that of that type. And a lot of this does predate my time involving in the project, but I know there was multiple alternatives that were looked at, and really what the goal was, you know, what can we do to improve safety out here on sixty-one and without while still provide accessible access? I know there's there's businesses along the area, there's residents that'll be affected. So, you know, the goal is really improve safety, but do the best we can to still provide reasonable access. So at the fall, at the end of that study, which was about a year ago, the preferred alternative, which was adopted by your council, is what we are moving ahead with with my project that we're gonna implement. If you'd go ahead, Chad. So this is just kinda zoomed in on the preferred alternative, what will be happening now. Starting on the kinda the lower right at the yellow intersection at Highway sixty will be a three-quarter, there'll be a three-quarter access right there with U-turns on either side of that. The same thing goes up at Shields Avenue, there'll be a three-quarter access, U-turns, and then up at at Bruger Valley Road, County Road thirty will be a three-quarter access. And I can get into it here in a little bit exactly what that means as far as how that'll affect traffic. Go ahead. So in essence, this is kind of a another one that's been built in another location, but really what what's gonna happen is a new concrete channelizing median will be be constructed. So what basically will prevent is from people going directly across or from making a left turn movement from the side road. Traffic from sixty-one will still be able to take right and left turns like they currently do today, but they will no traffic will not be able to sit in the median, they will not be able to cross, which is nearly the crashes that we're seeing out there are doing that. Go ahead, Chad. So how does it work? Like I said, if you're if you're on Highway sixty-one, you wanna turn onto Highway sixty on Shields or County Road thirty, do it just like you do today. It's a right turn, just like now. Go ahead. Left turn, same thing. There's no change in that. If you wanna take a left on any of the side roads, get in the left turn lane, you do it exactly like you do today. Not affected by the project. Go ahead. Now for the what the change will mean is for traffic on the side road, in order to make the left turn, you will have to take a right turn onto sixty-one and get immediately into the into the left turn lane. Go around, make into turn, and you can merge right on and go on your way to make the left turn. If you wanna cross Highway sixty-one, if you go ahead, it's much the same. You take a right onto sixty-one, go get immediately into the left turn lane, go down, make the U-turn, and you can then you would make the change lanes, get right into the right turn lane, and you would take the right turn off. Go ahead. So by doing this, these are the crashes that we're seeing that would would have been prevented if this would have been implemented. At Highway sixty, eight out of the ten crashes would have been preventable. Shields, all three of them would have been. And then at Bruger Valley, three out of five of the out of the crashes in the last five years would have been preventable. Like I said, I know there will be impacts to people. It's not as convenient as it is today for some, but, you know, really the safety benefits are hard to argue. Where we there's getting to be more and more of these built around the state, and I think we're nearing twenty of them around Minnesota right now. What we've seen so far, there's been about a seventy percent reduction in fatal crashes. I think it's roughly forty-five percent reduction in serious injury crashes. So so we did have a very strong justification for safety funding. So we submitted for funding and we received that funding back in twenty-six, about a year ago, I guess it was, we got funding. And at that time, it was funded to do this project in twenty twenty, but we thought, you know, it only made sense to do it. We're coming through here with a mill and overlay in nineteen, let's the same time. Probably makes sense rather than have the same contractor do it all. So we were able to receive the funding and we're moving ahead with it. Go ahead. So I'll just kinda go intersection by intersection here, just a few of the details. We do have a signed layout now, so this is this is what the layout will be at Highway sixty. You can see there has been concerns in other locations about how we're, you know, it's gonna be more difficult for semis to make these turns. So what we're gonna be doing is what we're creating, it's called a loon, and for trucks in that left turn lane, they can easily, they make that right turn, or they make the U-turn, I'm sorry, go in that loon area, and it it's designed for a, you know, a WB sixty-two, which is basically a full-size truck to make that move. Thing to note is that blue area, past the loon where it's, it looks like it's a shoulder on the outside of the road, truck or vehicles who are in that left turn lane to make the U, and they go and they make the U-turn, they can immediately pull into that blue area so they don't actually have to move merge in with Highway sixty-one traffic. So that should make it easier as well for for vehicles. Go ahead. Shield, I'm sorry, one other inter, one other thing at Highway sixty is we'll be constructing an out, what we're calling an offset right turn lane. The area shown in green will actually be a hatched out area on the road. It's it'll be paved just like the rest of the road, like the rest of the turn lane, but it'll be hatched out, which will push right turning vehicles further out away from Highway sixty-one, improve the sight distance for people sitting on the side road. We've seen that, I believe, there's been several crashes. People have pulled out in front of traffic on sixty-one when they were sitting on sixty just 'cause they were obstructed by a vehicle that was in that right turn lane. And I know we met here a few months ago, it was brought up was a concern that, you know, is it pushed out far enough? Is there anything else we can do? So we went back and looked at it, and we pushed it out several feet further, so now we have over a thousand feet of sight distance off of vehicles sitting on sixty. So we're confident that the sight distance will be improved for that move, that maneuver. Go ahead. Any questions so far? I'm just gonna go through this, but you guys have seen a lot of this before, I'm sure.
I got, I have one question.
Yep.
So when you're making these right turns and then moving over to the left left lane, and then you're crossing a couple lanes of traffic, and then if you make the U-turn and then wanna make a right turn, you gotta cross another couple lanes of traffic. Has what's the history been so far on these intersections that MinDOT's built? Have they had any problems with that?
Like I said, the numbers are pretty clear. I mean, when we we're seeing that much of a decrease in crashes, you know, they're not having the, it's not that direct crossing. People are, a lot of times people don't stop in the median, they'll pull out and they just breeze through the median. Sometimes you get two vehicles sitting side by side in the median, one'll block the other one. So those are the, those are the types of crashes that where we're seeing the most severe crashes. We just have not seen an incidence of that. I'm sure it happens. I mean, I can't, you know, when there's enough of these built, it's gonna happen, but they're typically the less severe type of crash when that happens.
Does the traffic density on the main road, say you have high density on the main road, does that affect the effectiveness of these R-cuts as far as safety? It seems like it would make it a lot more difficult for the, if you have a high traffic situation on the main road for anybody to, have there been any numbers on that? I mean, is there?
Well, like, for example, as a comparison, we're building several, we've built several of these on Highway fifty-two between Rochester and the cities this year. There was one in place, and I think there were three others that were constructed this year, and hence on fifty-two is obviously way higher than here. But, yeah, I mean, it would be that much more difficult to merge in with traffic when you're trying to cross and having to go down and make a U-turn and then make the U-turn and merge in with traffic again. I mean, it's gonna be a lot more, it's gonna be a lot simpler here in Wabashaw even compared to fifty-two. And they've been, they have worked well. The one, the one that did get put on fifty-two has been work working well, so. Shields is like, again, this one's almost identical geometrically to what's gonna be done at Highway sixty, except we're not gonna have that offset right turn lane here. Another thing to note to it, all these intersections will be putting extra lighting, so there'll be lights at the U-turn locations, there'll be lighting at the intersections themselves. Another thing here is we, I know there's been flooding concerns down here by the Dairy Queen, kinda historically, there's been issues out here. We're not gonna be replacing pipes down in this area, we're gonna be extending them 'cause the approaches will be wider as you're approaching Highway sixty-one, so that'd be wider approach, so it'll be extending a culvert under the side road. So won't be any major changes with that, but since the right of way is so wide in this location, we're gonna be creating a little extra storage out here for water. So be basically be widening the ditch out in a few areas to hopefully help out with that flooding a little bit. So go ahead. Another thing here, and this is gonna be at all three of them, not just here at Shields, but there'll be kinda the cut-throughs, which you can see in kinda that magenta color. So pedestrians will be able to just go straight through the medians on kinda either side of the intersection.
How wide will those be?
Um, I believe they are eight feet, I believe. Yep. Go ahead. Finally, at Bruger Valley Road, this one is, this one is gonna be simply the three-quarter access, there won't be the median turnarounds at this one, so traffic would have to go down. Either they can go back on Hiawatha and go back and just go directly to down to Shields, or they can, you know, they can always go down, take a left turn here, or take a right here and go down and make a U-turn at either fifty-nine, I guess, or down at Shields too, And then this one is separate from our project, but the county will be implementing this as well in twenty nineteen. There'll be, and again, this is part of that that preferred alternative that was adopted a year ago too, where fifty-nine will be cut off where it currently intersects sixty-one and to be curved down to connect directly into County Road ten. So the only thing that that'll be done with my project is we'll be constructing a southbound left turn lane and a northbound right turn lane to that new intersection. But otherwise, the rest will be done separately. The county will be doing that on their own.
What's the timeline for that one?
That'll be done in the same year, in twenty nineteen.
Okay.
So it'll work all well for timing.
That plays big into the core discussion as well with having an outlet for those trucks. Much easier, the mainer, the main, mainer, main intersections. It's been a long day.
So just kinda where we're at with our schedule, we got our layout was approved here in June. We're just busy working on design plans now, and we'll be continuing them through twenty eighteen. Probably be having some public outreach, probably have a public meeting to to bring others into it on, you know, early to mid twenty eighteen. And then it'll be led in eighteen with a summer of nineteen construction. I think it'll be a pretty full construction year, which is a long job, twenty-some miles, so, you know, exact timing, how it all plays out down here in Wabashaw, you know, that we won't have to find quite yet, but it'll be it'll be a good portion of twenty nineteen.
Start here.
Start here? So Lake City says.
It's easier to work up than down.
Right. Well, with that, I don't know if there's any other questions or?
Chad, how many of these did you say you had around the state already built?
There's over a dozen, and I I think there was there were several built this year as well. So I think it's probably getting close to twenty, but I don't I don't think it's quite twenty yet, fifteen to twenty.
And the accident rate?
But they're but they're all over the country. It's not just a Minnesota thing too. I mean, it's a, they're very popular around the country. I know it started in Michigan, but it's kinda spread now. It's the benefits have kinda been seen, and so they're really starting to be more widespread, I guess.
Using them on one sixty-nine, right? Yeah.
Yeah. I think they're by Bell, yep, Bell Plan. Yep.
They've been there a while.
Yeah.
I got, Chad, if you could possibly, because the public's listening to this, maybe discuss really briefly why we're not doing an overpass bridge or roundabouts or, 'cause we get every day, there's questions, you know, and then after they see this, they'll be asking us why. So if you could?
Well, I guess from the, as far as talking about overpass or bridge, I mean, we, that's a, first of all, there'd be a lot of impacts. I know if we tried to implement that at some of these intersections, the impacts, we'd be buying, you know, businesses out at Shields, there's really not right of way to do that. I know we did originally way back when, there was talk of a possible interchange at Highway sixty, but, you know, the trying to get funding for that and looking at how that would play in with. and looking at how that would play in with the needs around the district, I think it'd be pretty low.
That came up when I was working there and we did a sketch of it. And in order to go over, to take Highway sixty over sixty-one, we'd also have to take it over the railroad. And so by the time we got down to normal grade, uh, we'd be filling in most of that, uh, wetlands back there and the slough in there. So it had a tremendous impact. And one of the problems again is the proximity of, of the railroad right to the, uh, to the highway too.
Talk about cost share on the interchange.
Oh, that's right.
Right. Yeah, the, uh, I know it'd be a, it would not just be a hundred percent MINDOT funded job either. I mean, there would be a significant cost, yep, that would be, the city would have a expense as well to that. So I mean, there's, that's the part of it is kind of what you're getting at as well.
Whereas the city share on this is?
City share is essentially zero. So yeah, it's, it's gonna be a MINDOT funded project and, you know, even to, to get safety funding, this one had a, it, it played well just kind of where, when you look at it from a benefit cost standpoint, that, that was another reason why we were able to get the funding. As far as roundabouts, you know, and typically on this type of road, on a four-lane, high-speed road, it's, you know, generally that's not something you would, you would construct, I guess, on this high speed of a roadway, so.
Traffic signals? That's the other one that comes up.
Yeah, and again, traffic signals is similar. We've, you know, on the high-speed corridors like this, they're really, when they, they're more of a safety problem than they are a safety improvement. They, they assign right of way, but we have seen or time and time again on these high-speed corridors, when you put a traffic signal out on a high-speed road, there is a significant crash risk from rear end crashes. And, uh, yeah, I don't know. I would just say there's not, that would not be an increase in safety from a signal.
Chad, thank you.
Thank you for accommodating the, uh, offset turn lane. And everything you've done on this, it's been, you guys have been communicating well, so thanks, Chad.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Do you have any recommendations for outreach that you guys recommend? Maybe back to you or public, timing for a public meeting?
How about we get back to you on that?
Yeah, just.
Yeah, look me up on that.
We're open to whenever you guys would, would think would be a good timing.
We've had a few sessions already from a city perspective. So yeah, we can talk. Shoot me a note, Chad.
All right.
Thanks, Chad.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number ten-two. The approval of the two thousand eighteen budget levy, truth and taxation hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to address the council regarding truth and taxation? Seeing none, we'll move to approve the budget levy and I'll start by asking for a motion to approve the, uh, the budget and levy as proposed tonight.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
And then we'll open it up for full discussion. Any questions, any comments?
I know the number's been moved around a few times. Where are we thinking we're gonna be?
We're at two point seven now, um, two point seven percent. That takes into account, uh, we were able to get creative with some other spending, push some things out, move some things around. We accommodated the ten thousand for the core. We accommodated the, uh, uh, fire chief, uh, salary items. We accommodated the Main Street that was approved by you guys, um, at the last workshop. So we're at two point seven percent. There is a couple things still on the horizon. And it's strictly a timing thing is why we're still dealing with them. Ever since September, uh, we've had a group together, ever since, uh, the ambulance director position was left open. Um, we've had a group together looking at the body of the ambulance setup, uh, looking at staffing and all those things. So we're still working on that. In addition, there's another, uh, item that could be in front of the council yet this year, maybe first part of next year that I don't, or I don't think I can talk on yet. Uh, but if you take those two and things into account, I, I don't see them impacting, um, the budget significantly, so to speak. So what that means is if we set it at two point seven percent, we're utilizing a hundred thousand of reserves. If one of the things happens over the other, we would either use less reserves or use more reserves or both things could happen and they zero out. So it's kind of a, when we're utilizing reserves like this, of which we, we do have a significant balance at this point. We can make that two point seven what we want to do, but we also don't want to forget about it and not get ourselves, you know, as the discussion went the other night, Craig, is getting ourselves back to the, to the balanced approach.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, well, I think the balanced approach is something we should strive for, which is what your general fund analysis says that we get back to it in the year twenty twenty-three. And that's still, at that point, would still leave us with a, um, unrestricted general fund balance of two point one million. So I kind of like having a larger balance than what has been recommended because we're a small city. So if we look at percentages of budgets, if you say forty percent, sixty percent on our budget, that's not a whole lot. And if we get into a infrastructure problem, that could get eaten up real easy. So I, I think saving, uh, a larger amount of unrestricted general fund balance is not a bad idea at this point. And so I hate to eat into it if we don't have to. So I am encouraging, uh, Chad and the rest of the city to look at ways we can be, uh, more efficient to try and eliminate our costs rather than, or else either, either eliminating our costs, reducing our costs or increasing our revenues somehow. Rather use of, uh, grants, whatever, anything that's available like that. So that's all. Otherwise, I think you did a great job on this, just getting this through at this point where at two point seven is, I think is a good, a good tax figure.
Yeah, and I can talk to that impact here at two point. Did a little chart here, so at two point, you can't see that. At two point seven percent on a hundred thousand dollar property value, your taxes would increase four dollars. If you went up to three point five percent, they'd go up seven dollars, uh, four point five, eleven dollars. Then if you jump to a two hundred thousand dollar home, uh, your two point seven would go up nine dollars, three point five eighteen and four point five thirty. So just to kind of give you a ballpark of, of, uh, how that would impact, um, where you're at. Also, our tax rate, um, based on two thousand eighteen will come in about sixty-eight percent. Just two short years ago, that was seventy-five percent. So we've continued to shrink that. Uh, one big thing on that analysis that I will, that I didn't caveat was that's a conservative approach to the net taxable value because our net tax capacity, uh, once, and I forgot the year, but I think it's next year, when TIF number three comes off the books, a significant amount of tax capacity will be added, which means we could have a, just like we did last year, we can have a levy uh, that might look bad when you look at the number, yet it is a decrease to property values because your tax capacity is going up higher than your levy. So, um, that's not in those numbers, so.
That'll be good.
Yeah, so things are certainly, uh, by utilizing the reserves, we're not, uh, we're weathering the storm over a couple of years rather than one one.
All right, any other comments? I will have one that I'd like to share. I think if you remember at the, uh, library, we had a request for four thousand dollars for, um, uh, the Main Street program. Does that ring a bell? And I think that we suggested to, uh, Chad to include that. My concern that night, and it still is tonight, are we spending money on building another silo? I was interested in getting the mission statement of the Main Street, comparing it with the Port Authority and comparing it with our chamber. And how much overlapping, if any, was there? Well, I asked the presenter of that evening and got a rather curt answer today. Does not have time to answer a question or explain, uh, to any, to everybody who, who asks. So I'm thinking I'd like to say, you better change your attitude. This is a partnership. And, and I was taken back by that today, John. You might be able to tell. If any, if any citizen came to a council member and the council member says, I really don't have time to answer that, I'd feel pretty bad about that. I don't think anyone around this table would do that. That's my comment.
So I guess the question then is the Main Street funding included in this budget?
It is four thousand dollars. And, and it remains there and I'm okay with that. But I would like to, for going forward, are we building another silo? Because I don't think we need to. I don't think that's positive at all.
I don't, I don't know, you know.
Pardon me?
I think the Main Street, if you're talking about what is the objective of Main Street? And that is, to me, what, the way it's been explained to me is to try and get the focus on getting rid of the empty buildings, bringing some ex, some, uh, attention down to Main Street, uh, attracting new businesses. And that is right, that is part of the site, of the, what the Port Authority does and as the chamber as well. So now I'm gonna ask you, are we getting the job done? I don't think we are. And I don't, putting the blame on the port or the, the chamber, but I think we need to put more, uh, attention to this and more effort into it. And so if the Main Street, which brings in people who do this throughout this state, can bring us some added expertise for a relatively low cost, I think it's a good buy.
Nobody is arguing maybe with the benefits and I don't, I won't go any further. Are we building another silo? Do the mission statement, do the, do what each, does what each agency want to do, do they overlap, uh, Craig? Okay, other comments or, uh, discussion?
Um, just one more thing on that. One of the points that was made also is that level of membership opens up to a whole bunch more grant opportunities. Am I remembering that correctly? And so the, the grants that they were able to get may offset the extra cost to, to be that level of a member in that program. That's what I took away from it being something to support.
I mean, I'd really like to see though, some concrete examples in Faribault or Owatonna or Winona where this Main Street program actually did something beneficial to the community. Because when I, I'm, when I read it more about this thing, I was kind of like going, this probably isn't, like you said, I think it's another silo. It does overlap with this, uh, the Port Authority's job. And I don't, I mean, their big thing for next year was to get some brown signs on the highway that said, welcome to the historic district. Craig said it was two hundred dollars or something to get a sign.
It used to be and it may have gone up.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm sure eight of us at the table here could come up with four hundred bucks for two signs and save us thirty-two hundred dollars. You know, it's just, I'm not, I wasn't too impressed with it.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, uh, this is the budget, the annual budget, so let's roll.
Sola?
Yes.
Holcomb?
Yes.
Woodley?
Yes.
Yes.
Trademeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes. Pass unanimously. Anything else to add on that, Chad? Then we'll move down to, uh, item ten-three, set a special meeting for year-end warrants. And what do you have in mind?
Uh, we've done it, uh, many different ways. It's, uh, so the thirty-first is a Sunday, how about that?
I don't think so.
Off the course here.
Now is, the holiday would be the first, well, yeah, it'd be the first, so. How about the Friday morning, the twenty-ninth? We've done it in the past where we have just four, sometimes seven.
Cause I, I won't be able to make that, but that's, there's enough, there's enough, so.
Jeff Ken, Ellen Ken, Steve Ken.
Thank you.
So that's four.
We got enough, so let's do that. We'll do nine o'clock, Sue? Okay.
Nine o'clock on the twenty-eighth. I'd like to, uh, once again compliment the staff. When they put together a packet and get it out to us several days early, it gives us a chance to study it, look at it, ask questions, maybe before. And we're able to, uh, get through a meeting, uh, very nicely. So thanks, Chad, thanks, Sue, and all the department heads out there, Tony too. And then who could read the donations tonight?
One thing I want to mention, going back, I did send every council member. Councilperson Moir couldn't make it tonight, but he wanted me to share that article with you that I sent to your email. Did you guys get it yet? Okay. So I told Dean I would do that on his behalf.
We gotta do ten-four, the roller.
Yeah, the, the roller piece. So if we can't get this thing back running, we'd like approval to be able to refund the money, uh, to the purchaser.
I'd make a motion to refund accordingly.
Okay.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Both same side and pass unanimously.
See what you can do, Tony.
John, you got the, uh, donations in front of you?
I do. So we have, um, thousand dollars youth hockey program from the Burkhardt Rammer VFW. Uh, five hundred dollars from Burkhardt VFW to the Wabashaw Chamber for the Old Fashioned Christmas. The library expansion, all of these are for library expansion, a hundred dollars in memory of uh, Jackie Beaver by Donald and Harriet Klinger. A hundred dollars in memory of Tara Beaver by Kathy Garrity. A hundred dollars, uh, from Dallas and Joanne Fransden. Um, a hundred dollars from Stephen Carroll Scott, sixty dollars in memory of Genevieve Teisman. Hundred, ten dollars from Dean, another ten from Dean, ninety dollars in cash. Fifteen hundred dollars awarded to the community grant program. I don't know what that is or where that goes. Is that also in it to the library expansion? Do we know? Walmart community grant?
I do not know.
Program equipment, must be.
Yes.
So library gift fund, um, one thousand eight hundred and one dollars forty-seven cents from People's Energy Cooperative, for, uh, operation roundup for projector and screen equipment. Twenty-five hundred to Wabashaw Area Community Resource Center for Furniture and Children's Room. Um, five hundred dollars from Thomas and Patricia Hasek. Three hundred, oops, sorry, three hundred and forty dollars from Anonymous, a hundred dollars from Dan and Linda Binner, twenty-five dollars in memory of Joan Gillard by Diane and Fred Scholberg, twenty dollars from Judith and Party Shirts, twenty dollars from Mary O'Brien and twenty dollars from Dove Hall.
And every dollar is appreciated. Thank you very much. Motion to accept the donations?
I got one, one quick question. I'm just kind of curious, um, why is the, how come the VFW is giving five hundred dollars to the city to go to the Chamber of Commerce? I mean, shouldn't they just be giving the money directly to the Chamber of Commerce? Where does, or my reading is wrong? How does that, how does that, because we're not, the, the city doesn't, isn't a member of the Chamber of Commerce.
No, it's, it's through their, um, gambling fund. So they have, they have, legally they have a form. No, it's, it's through their, um, gambling funds, so they have, they have, legally they have a form that, to give those gambling funds.
Well, that's what that is for, then, okay.
I have to sign it as the city clerk and then we pass it on.
Okay, Jeff, you made the motion to accept?
Sure.
All second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed same sign, passed unanimously. Motion to adjourn?
So much.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Merry Christmas, everyone. We'll see you before, the twenty-eighth?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.